Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, Mayor.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. Today being Tuesday, December 1, and for the record, the time is 7:00 PM. This is our official organizational meeting for next year, or for the next two years. And before we move forward, we have to close up the last year, which will be item number three on your agenda with consideration of the minutes so far, the October 28 and the November 4 meeting. Does the Chair here motion be approved as they have written on our corrections?
So may.
It's been moved and seconded, the minutes be corrected, be approved. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, the minutes are approved. Okay, now we will go on to get the officials sworn in for the rest of the season. We're going to have, we're very honored to have with us tonight Judge Quentin Sumner to administer oath of office for the persons coming in. And we will start with the Mayor and move to the council members, Mrs. Hinton and Mr. Taylor. And then we will take just a brief moment and elect a mayor pro tem, and then our judge will administer the oath to the mayor pro tem. And then after that, it's business as usual.
Mayor.
Sir.
You mentioned the oath for Ms. Hinton and Mr. Taylor, we've got one more.
Coleman. Yep. I was looking at chairs. He was in the wrong place. Okay. Once you get oaths, you can come up here.
Get oath.
Oath.
Look, everybody, listen. Go around the front.
All righty. Start with me, sir.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of laws of the State of North Carolina, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office as mayor, town, Nashville, which you are about to enter, under the best of your skill and ability, as hope you God.
I will.
Mr. Sir. Question mark. Ms. Hinton.
Ms. Hinton.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of laws of the State of North Carolina, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office of council member, town of Nashville, which you are about to enter, under the best of your skill and abilities, as hope you God.
I will.
Mr. Taylor. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of laws of the State of North Carolina, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office of council member, town of Nashville, which you are about to enter, under the best of your skill and abilities, as hope you God.
I will.
Where is that? Where's that?
Maggie.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of laws of the State of North Carolina, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office of council member, town of Nashville, which you are about to enter, under the best of your skill and abilities, as hope you God.
I will.
Everybody assume stations, and we'll elect a mayor pro tem. In your honor, if you will hold just a moment, we'll be right with you.
According to our town ordinances, a mayor pro tem is elected for a two-year term following each election. Our election has just passed. Our previous mayor pro tem was Larry Taylor, and I'd like to thank him for backing me up in many occasions as we traveled through the last couple of years. So as we move forward, we'll require a nomination for someone to serve as mayor pro tem for the next two years, and the Chair will entertain a nomination. I don't want to do it by myself. Who would like to nominate who? I'll appoint somebody.
I guess you'll have to appoint.
Well...
I'll have some heart for us to do.
The ordinance says we can't appoint, we have to have an election, that requires a nomination. But we had Mr. Taylor before you, and I think Tommy Rogers is before that, and I believe you were before Tommy. And if we're going to rotate around, I guess Mrs. Hinton's turn again, but that does not constitute an election. But I'd be happy to hear Mrs. Hinton's name if you would like to nominate that.
Being the one that's being nominated, that's due rotation, I nominate Ms. Hinton.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Is there a discussion? Okay. There being none, all in favor, elected Mrs. Hinton as mayor pro tem for the next two years, indicate so we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? By landslide.
I wouldn't say by default.
Judge?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to go around the front and be sworn in again? Get a full effect of that. I really appreciate you coming, Judge, I know you're very busy. I know you're very busy.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of laws of the State of North Carolina, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of your office of mayor pro tem, town of Nashville, which you are about to enter, under the best of your skill and abilities, as hope you God.
I will.
Okay, all that being done, I want to thank everybody for being willing to serve for more years. Congratulations on your election, sir.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to working with you. If you have any questions, ask anybody. Wish you want the right answers, ask anybody. Okay, the next item we have to do is to secure the appointments for the next two years, which is item E on the organizational section. And I'm looking for that in my package, which I don't seem to be able to find.
Purple tail.
Purple tail, I don't have a purple.
Red.
Oh, there it is, okay. Purple and pink were stuck together there, okay. Yeah, we have a number of committees that we have to serve on. The Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments and the Upper Coastal Plain Rural Planning Organization, and the Parks and Advisory Board, and the Library Board, and the Rocky Mount Metropolitan Planning Organization, Gateway Partnership, and then we have to have someone who is, represents the town on the Employment Safety Committee. And what I have done with the manager's help is renew everybody in about the same places and added in Mr. Coleman on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board where I had been. I thought it was worthwhile to take the Upper Coastal Plain Rural Planning Organization and the Rocky Mount MPO group and put those together, because they seem to have the same topic, unless there's some difficulty with that. Does anyone have any discussion on that?
I do. I would like to relinquish that decision since you have me appointed to three, and everybody else has one. I would like to relinquish that one.
Okay, that's good. Okay. Now, the MPO meets, what, once a quarter?
Yes.
Okay. And the other organization that you're on, says the MPO, the RPO, is that the other one you're on? Okay.
The RPO.
Okay. Would anyone like to be part of the Rocky Mount Metropolitan Planning Organization? Mr. Taylor, I have you as the alternate on that. Would you care to volunteer for that?
I'd be fine.
Okay. And who would like to back up that?
Okay, I thought I was doing that, MPO.
Which one did you?
The Upper Coastal Plain.
Oh, the Upper Coastal Plain, I'm sorry, I got the wrong, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I got the wrong one. Let me get you in the right place here. Okay. Okay, Charles, you also to back up on that. Could you follow that?
Yeah, I'd be fine.
Okay. And who would like to back up as an alternate for Mr. Taylor?
I'll back him.
You're real?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so we've got everything in place then. And the Safety Committee meets once a quarter. The Gateway Partnership meets how often, Mayor? Once a quarter?
I know it, once a month.
Once a month?
Once a month.
Okay, and the RPO meets once a quarter, and the Advisory Board used to meet once a quarter for the library. They still do that, Charlie?
Uh huh.
Okay. And the Parks and Recreation Board meets quarterly, and then the Upper Coastal Plain Rural Planning Organization, I think that's a quarterly thing, too. And then the Coastal Plain Council of Governments where I am, that, they meet monthly. And they have some very, very long meetings. And I... Which two did you say you were going to combine, Mayor? We combined the Upper Coastal Plain Rural Planning Organization. Charles is going to take that, Charles Taylor, and Michael Coleman's going to be his alternate. Everybody clear on that? Okay, that being said, we'll move forward. We've had no comments from our citizens, so we'll move right on into the business. The first item of consideration is our Downtown Development Incentive Grant application from Edward Glenn Smith for renovations at 235 West Washington Street. Now, we've all been excited watching this plan come together, and in 2010, I believe it was, we passed an ordinance to allow for persons in the B2 district to receive an incentive grant for taxation on the improvements on their property. And it sort of works like this, if you spend money on your building and improve it, that the tax value of that that comes to you all at one time is spread across five years, that you get 20% the first year, and then eventually over five years, you back up at 100% full tax. And Mr. Smith is here this evening applying for that in relationship to revisions of his building at 235, which is supposed to be an oyster bar, and I've already spoken for the first steamed oyster, so don't anybody jump on it. Okay, big one. One. Okay. Does the Chair here motion approve the consideration?
So may.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, we approve the consideration of the Downtown Incentive Grant for Edward Glenn Smith. Is any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Yeah, accordingly, it is done. Item number two is the presentation of the Planning Board update from Brian Hassel. It seems like the people with the solar farm have changed their mind. Mr. Hassel?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to let everybody know, there's no action items, but I did want you to know, seeing to how you were in the joint hearing, the solar farm company did withdraw their special use permit and their rezoning application at this time. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that we won't be having a vote on the application that you heard in the joint hearing back in October. Another update I wanted to give you is Mr. Coleman was on my planning board, so now I have a vacancy on my planning board, so I'm looking at another good member. Mr. Coleman was great to work with, and if you find somebody interested in the community, you can send them my way, but I do need one more planning board member.
Okay. Okay, we will take that under advisement. Okay?
Mr. Hassel, do we anticipate the solar farm reapplying at a later date?
I do.
Okay.
Okay. All right, item number C is a consideration of a resolution to amend personnel policy of the Town of Nashville, Article 5, Section 5. This was fostered with the situation we had concerning employment of employing family members under supervisory people with whom they're related, and we went through a long discussion on that. What it amounted to was, we were having some persons doing temporary and seasonal work out of the park who were related to our park, to our regulation directors, because we couldn't find anybody else. And it's no big deal, it's just not what the law required. So we chose our manager to bring us language to affect this so we can get the work done. And if you look at the last section in there, it says, "This provision shall not reply," I'm sorry, "this provision shall not apply retroactively to anyone employed when the provision is adopted by the town nor to employees working in a temporary or seasonal position," which means that, which is a nepotism thing. So that cleans that up very nicely. But we've still got some more work to do with other language in there that's existing that does not affect this, and that was not part of the charge for this event. Okay, there's a Chair here, motion we approve, we approve the correct of language.
Ms. Street, you might want to explain immediate family, so that everybody understands that term.
Okay, immediate family. Okay, so, okay, hold on. The town prohibits hiring and employment of immediate family in full or part-time positions within the same work unit. Immediate family is defined in Article 7, Section 12, which includes immediate family like direct blood and interrelated by blood in marriage. That includes in-laws, grandparents, uncles, those sorts of things. But what we're looking at now is, the town also prohibits the employment of any person into a permanent position who is an immediate family member of individuals holding the following positions: the mayor, the mayor pro tem, the town council member, the town manager, finance director, human resources officer, town clerk, or the town attorney. Now, the problem with that is you go further in language that we're going to have to address later, is that should someone be working for the town, like a career employee, been at 10 years, they're working for the maintenance department or something, and their brother-in-law or something gets elected to town council, then those people got to quit their job, which is some sort of punishment. We've got to work on that language as we travel forward. That's not an issue for tonight. So the nepotism policy deals with directly related people: mothers, fathers, sons, daughters, in-laws, uncles, aunts. Who else did I miss? That's everybody. Sons and daughters. Yep. So that's that. Okay, do we hear a motion to approve this?
Make a motion that we approve it, as written.
Okay, as motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Is that, second?
Second.
Second, okay. It's been moved and seconded, we approve the language as it's been corrected by our manager. Is any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay. And our last item is consideration of a resolution for extensions of credit and incumbency certificates of PNC Bank. This is a pro forma document we need to fill out. You'll notice, we have to have a name of two persons on there who are responsible for the town to deal with the PNC Bank with the issues that we have with them. The last two names we had on there was our town manager and our finance officer, who are now gone, and we need to add in the name of Henry Raper and Linda Mottling, so they can do business at the bank for us. The Chair here motion, we approve this?
So may.
Okay, been moved and...
Second.
Seconded. Do we approve the consideration? Is any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, ducky, all done. All righty, and we've got one item left, consideration of a budget amendment, which deals with some money that we have received that we had not anticipated for donation with the fire department, with our Christmas shopping thing, with their shop with the cop program. We received some extra money for that. We've got to increase their budget from 1525 to 4225 based on contributions, no tax money involved, and I understand there's some more money coming, too. And the other item deals with some decrease. We received $119 from state library appropriations, which reduces the money in the state library restricted fund from 4019 to $3,900. Sort of a pro forma thing. Does the Chair here motion, we approve this budget amendments?
So may.
It's been moved and seconded, is any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so we're saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Accordingly, it is done. Okay, we're down to the manager report. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. For the month of December now, our November report from the previous month is we have revised our town travel policy, subject to approval from town council for our January council meeting. Parks and Recreation had an attendance of around 200 for the Nashville Hornets Football and Cheerleading Homecoming Cookout and Awards Program on November 7. The Fund Run and Walk fundraiser for hip dysplasia raised $1,500 with an attendance of around 150. The Police Department will be holding its pack of patrol car program at Walmart on December 5 from 9:00 AM until 5:00 PM. The Cops and Kids Christmas will be on December 10 at 9:00 AM. Sergeant Brooks will be given a life-saving award for his efforts regarding a traffic accident on Highway 64. The Fire Department conducted CPR training for Town of Nashville employees and is preparing to order their new SCBA. Loose leaf pickup and fall street sweeping have begun and are on schedule in the Public Works Department. Christmas decorations have also been displayed throughout town. The Planning Department has completed its draft comprehensive transportation plan to be adopted in early 2016. The plan will be used in the future for evaluating transportation projects, including highway, pedestrian, and bicycles. The Town Library conducted several children's events, including storytime and craft sessions, which continue to be in high demand. A representative from Enroll America will be at the library to assist in ACA enrollment on November 25, December 16, and 30, and January 6 and 20, from 2 until 6:00 PM. The annual kids' Christmas storytime and Santa visit at the library will be on December 10 at 10:30. $901.19 was raised through donations by town employees for United Way during the month of November. And our Public Utilities Department has cleaned debris and growth from several of our sewer outfalls during November, and please remember to be safe. Our Public Utilities has cleaned up five deer carcasses from town right-of-ways over the past month, so please drive carefully.
You excited, Ted?
Yes, sir. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for our manager? Okay, moving along. Council members, Mr. Taylor?
Well, Mayor, since you already spoke for the first oyster, Mr. Smith, make sure I get the second.
Mike is so big, he has to check for bone.
But I want more than one. Mr. Coleman, welcome aboard. I look forward to working with you as a fellow council member. We've worked together on other projects, so I look forward to working with you. And you just alluded to the fact that United Way, that we raised 9,000?
No, $901.
900.
From donations from county employees.
900. For those that don't know, there was a little bit of a friendly competition going on among the departments, and I really, I think I do know who, what department won, but I'm not going to bring that up, but a little friendly competition among employees always works out good. And when you compete with somebody, your outcome is going to always be better than what it was done if you did it by yourself, so I want to commend all the department heads and the employees that you supervise for contributing and raising that amount of money. Everybody, please be safe during the holidays. Christmas is right around the corner, and I had, I'm not going to say privileged, but the opportunity to have to travel 95, 495, 395, 695 over the last weekend, and it took me an eight-hour trip that should have been a six-hour trip. So be careful out there on the road, and you have to do more than just look out for what you're doing, you got to look out for what the guy next to you is doing also. So I want everybody to be careful and see you when the New Year rolls around. Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Taylor?
Here, I'll take a shrimp, because I have oysters. I'm really, really proud that you're doing this. It will certainly add to the flavor of downtown Nashville. And as Larry said, welcome, Michael. I'm sure you'll do a wonderful job. It's good to have young people involved.
Thank you.
Thank you, citizens, for attending tonight and supporting Michael, his family, and all of you. That's it, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Mr.?
And to welcome Michael, and appreciate his family turning out to support him.
Come in, Miss Mike.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, like everybody else said, looking forward to you coming out to the town, and anything we can do to help you out. Love Downtown Development and things happening in some of those buildings, so like you said, everybody said, anything we can do to help you and support you, we look forward to doing that. I want to thank council for, you know, your warm welcomes, and I, too, am happy to be on this council and look forward to serving the town, and I look forward to working with all the department heads and employees. We have a great town here in Nashville where I grew up, and as I said, when I was campaigning, I stayed here for a reason, it's because I love my town, and now I get the honor of serving my town, and so thankful for my family and thankful for my town, and just hope everybody has a great Christmas.
Okay, thanks, sir. And Michael, I'd like to add my congratulations to everyone else's for your election, and looking forward to working with you. And like Mr. Taylor said, we need all the youth we can get. Please don't forget the Christmas parade on Friday at the 4 o'clock. They'll have all the kids with the bicycles and the tricycles and all that stuff right there. And at 5 o'clock, we'll put a switch and light the Christmas tree.
Is it Friday or Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday.
You said Friday.
I'm sorry. Saturday, December 5.
You threw me off there.
Well, that's okay, I have to hear it today already.
Okay.
I'll get down the street eating oysters, I was like, there you go. December 5 on Saturday, 4 o'clock is the Christmas parade, 5 o'clock we'll light the Christmas tree, out of the bale ship. And after that, it's official Christmas shopping time in Nashville. I got a couple of comments here. Number one is, we just went through all the committee assignments, and I'm with the Upper Coastal Plain Council of Governments, and we work on a two-year cycle there, and this is the annual report for 2014 and 15. It's got all the stuff we've done in it, which is a lot of stuff. And I will give this to our manager, so you can look at it. We're a member of that outfit, as you know, and they do a lot of stuff with us, for us and that. I also have here in my hand something very interesting I recommend, because you look at this, I don't know whether you get the American City of County or not, we get a lot of stuff, this came to me just so, previous it comes to Mayor, I don't know if y'all collected it or not, but it's got an article in here, it features all that dark water rising, which deals in infrastructure and water systems. And it's worth looking at, because what it tells us is that almost every water system, the sewer system in the country runs at near cost, and no money being put aside to replace them, and these things run in 40, 50, 60, 80-year deterioration cycles, depending on whether you've got water, whether you've got sewer, the temperatures, the different types of materials you've got. And they paint a rather dim view about what's going to happen with the infrastructure, water, and sewer. And what they continue to say is that all American utility system, water and sewer are depriced, because of no money being put aside to replace the system. It's very insightful. I will give this to our manager, if you need it, just please take a look at it. Okay, other than that, we're all off into Christmas, and I guess we'll all be together next year.
Mayor, before we go further, looking back over the boards that we've all been assigned to, I'd like to give a brief update on what we talked about at the Gateway Partnership meeting this week.
Yes, sir, please, please, yeah, please.
We met last week and a half ago, and we were advised that our plant that's coming up out here at the tobacco place, the Seifi, for lack of the full name, that they have already started taking in the potatoes already, but they have not started the process. But the building is finished, the people have already moved in, they're doing the intake, so we should be, as relates to our water and sewer stuff, we should, it should be impacting this very shortly, because they've already got trucks making deliveries. They also brought us up to date on our Nashville...
Business Park.
Business Park, thank you, sir. The Nashville Business Park. Initially, we, we've already got the contractors just going out there, and they told us that he had one vendor or business that wanted to occupy one of the buildings as soon as he got it constructed. But they will also give us some more good news, that another business, that I cannot remember the name right now, approached him and said that he wanted the second building, and he wanted something right now. And he wanted something so fast that the Gateway Partnership found him a temporary building in the Rocky Mount area, so he could go ahead and start his business or continue his business. So that tells us that as soon as the second building is completed, we've got tenants, has a tenant to go in that one also. So the two buildings that they proposed to put up, I think we've already got them occupied.
Maybe asking the question is premature, but when does construction start?
Well, I asked the same question, when will construction start, and they told me that, well, the contractor had just got the lease, the deeds signed over to him, so that's what he was waiting on, so I'm expecting to see some dirt turn any time.
Okay, excellent. Because we got it to dry well for the sewage lift out there, and everything's...
Right, so we're waiting on him.
Everything's moved.
Everything's in his hand now. Do you know anything better than that, Mr. Hassel? Do you know anything better than that, Mr. Hassel?
No, you summed it up just fine. We did deed our four acres over to him as we were required to do so. Our infrastructure is in place and well on the way, so we're just waiting on him to start work, so you said it just perfectly.
Okay. That's it, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Anything else?
I have a question about Gary Golson's place. Has that been sold, or do you know anything about it? They seem to be cleaning it out.
Yes, ma'am, I think they're cleaning it. I've asked the same questions, but nothing's come through our office.
Okay, so you don't know if it's been sold?
No, ma'am.
Other comments?
What are we doing with Dylan after?
The last I heard is a church looking at it, and where did it go from there, Brian?
Yes, sir. There was a church that was looking at it, and we also have two other interested parties. What you're probably alluding to, Mr. Taylor, is Mr. Baines had to cut up the street, and we had a water issue, and so he went ahead and took care of that for whatever future tenant may go in there.
Okay, that's, I saw a lot of town activity going on, didn't know what we were doing.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baines was just fixing a problem.
Okay, thank you.
So, it's still in limbo there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, then. Okay, with all that said and done, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and we'll see you next year, and this was some disaster between now and then, which we do not plan to have, and the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So may, Mayor.
So may.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? There being none, all in favor, indicate so we say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Accordingly, we adjourn.